I will be calling the AMSA Board of Trustees meeting for September to order. We do have a quorum. This meeting is being recorded and it's live streaming on the AMSA Facebook page. And Sarah, can you do me a favor to announce the members in attendance?
Yes, I will. So let's get down here. Okay. In attendance are Don Capello, Jill Schaefer, Laura Burgess, Laura Webster, Nick Poirier, Raul Porus, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, and Zachary Prescott.
Thank you. And next, we'd like to appoint a timekeeper. You volunteers?
I'll do it.
Sax, hand as usual, check for volunteering.
No problem.
All right. So we got the attendees. Is Bella on? Bella's not on. I did ask her if we had received any requests for public comments, and she did not say that we did. I don't see any. Oh, there's Bella. Maybe I can ask her. Bella, if you can hear me, can you confirm whether we received any requests for public comment?
I have not received any requests.
Okay, thank you. So there being none, we'll move on. I'm gonna move things around a little bit, like I mentioned, for the interest of the people that have to drop, but also for the votes. So let's get the EC votes out of the way. I'm assuming everybody received the minutes as part of the package from our August meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from August?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the August minutes.
You have a second?
I'll second, Zach.
Sax, seconds. So Roger and Sax. Sax, can you call the vote?
Yes. Okay. Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
Oh, and Benjamin Hamel's here. He's now.
And I approve as well, thank you.
All right. I just noticed that you were here, okay.
Yes. And I guess for the record, we have Nick and Ben Hamel joining Bella as well.
And Bella's here too?
Yes.
Yes, great, okay. I hit the, there's a little button that comes across here, and I hit it and I lost, I went out and I had to come back again, sorry.
No worries. Thank you, and the motion passes. Next, Liz, if you're ready. So we have our guest. You saw this, Trilusless? Oh, no, you're here.
Nope, I'm here.
We have our guest, returning board alumni. To, you know, she was generous enough to help us with Ellen's ED performance review for the, for previous school year. So I know we, I shared in advance the memo that was shared with Ellen and was discussed with her. So just to formally wrap up the process, we're gonna vote today on that. But I don't know, Liz, if you wanna summarize what we did and kind of the contents of that memo.
Yeah, I mean, I won't go over the memo, cuz everyone has already seen it. But I think one of the things, when we discussed it with Ellen on Monday, you know, when we looked at the survey results that came back, there was never, I mean, the, the ratings of Ellen were very consistent. And actually, Raul pointed out that the only time where she was rated a little lower was by herself and not by members of the board or her direct reports. So I think Ellen ended up being harder on herself than, than any of us, or any of you, I should say, were. And I think, and the other thing that I noted on the survey was there was never more than like one point difference. So there was, there was never a, a large skew of, of the difference between, you know, the voting or the, the survey results from the various members of both the board and the, and her direct reports. And again, just as, as we talked about in the focus for next, for this coming year, you know, the one thing that we really did talk about, besides all the work that will need to be done on the new building, is really just ensuring a smooth transition as she heads towards her, her retirement. So that's really sort of the key takeaway for this upcoming year. Any questions?
Does anybody have any discussion about the, the contents of the memo or anything you wanna add to our experience with Ellen the last year? And just to state the obvious, this is a special evaluation, given that it's probably the last one. Well, I'm sure we'll do one at the end of next year. But as we're getting ready for her retirement, we, we wanna be thankful for everything that Ellen and Anderson Extension have done in the last five years, since both of them, you know, kind of tag teamed this executive director role, and how far we've come. This was a great opportunity to reflect on that and to see the accomplishments as far as the trust environment in the school, you know, the dealing with challenges, getting closer and closer to a resolution in our facilities, which now, you know, the point where we're at, as much as it seems like hard work, is a much, much better position than we were in five years ago. So all of that is summarized in this report. All of that, you probably, you had a chance to review. One thing to comment as far as process, we are working. The next step after this is on Ellen's goals for this fiscal, this year, school year starting now. So we'll approve those in October. But as far as the review process, your vote to approve this memo and this, this evaluation kind of wraps the, the process up. I did wanna add something, and you know, it doesn't matter if it's before or after the vote, but the other thing that it's important for the community to know is that as we're getting ready to, as part of the ED search process, and when we get ready for the following school year, when it would be the next executive director's first year in the school, the plan as of now per Ellen's intentions and, and, you know, at least speaking for myself, the board's intention as well, and you guys can confirm this is the case for, for the majority of the board, is that Ellen will continue to be involved in the school at least for one year and in the capacity that would support the transition, that would support transition to new executive director, and that will also allow her to focus on things at the Capital Campaign and the building project in, in a new role. The specifics on how that role would work under the new executive director or working for one of her current direct reports and whatnot, we're still working on those details because we wanna make sure we're able to do that before the new executive director comes in, just to make sure that's in place and there's no gaps in transition. So we're still working through that, but just know that it is Ellen's intention, and I totally support that, and I'm sure you do as well, to stay involved with the school. So she's, as much as she's easing into her retirement, she's not running away June 30th, 2023. So that, that, I just wanna make that clear as part of the process and the, and the onboarding process and the fact that she's making herself available to make sure a smooth transition takes place. Any other comments, reactions, and anything you wanna add about the performance? Process, performance review process? If not, just for requirements for the process and these, I would like to hear a motion to approve the evaluation memo that was presented to Ellen to wrap up the process.
I'll make that motion at Sheila.
I'll second that. Can I second that? Raul, seconds.
All right. Shall I call?
Yes, please.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ellen, for another great year and looking forward to wrapping it up with the golden ribbon.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Raul, and everyone.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Actually, yeah, Raul, I'm gonna sign off, so you guys can continue.
And yes, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Liz for, after her graduation from the board, from stepping back up to help us with this. So thank you, Liz, for, for the time and the effort and the support that you always have provided to AMSA.
Oh, no problem. All right, we'll see you later. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, next agenda. I'm not sure, is this, Ellen, are you gonna mention it for the Answer Contract Amendment, or is that Nick?
Yeah, Nick is here. Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is. Yes, Nick can, are you ready to do that, Nick?
Sure. So what exactly, so remind me exactly what the vote is so that I can explain it a little better to everybody.
So I think this is, we discussed this last time about having to change a budget because of the, the architect's work for, for the new building. No?
No, this is, this is actually the owner's project manager. This is Answer. So as we've changed the project over time, it has extended the timeline. And instead of breaking ground this summer, we'll be breaking ground next summer, which has added additional time onto our OPM's contract. So what this is, is it's a, it's an updated proposal for that extra time. Anything else, Nick, more complicated and technical than that you can add?
Um, no, I think, so, so I think it's, I think it's good that everybody understands it a little, a little bit more. So basically, what we did was for Answer, it was a $290,000 contract for basically a two-year contract. And so basically, what we're doing now is because of the redesign, Answer, every step of the way, has provided the services that were agreed to under their initial contract. And back to Ellen's point, where now the project itself is extended another year, Answer is now asking for another $100,000 to extend it through that year. And so I did the math quickly, and the first two years was $145,000 a year. This new last year is $100,000 a year. So I don't wanna say that we're getting a discount, cuz that's pretty relative, but we're kinda getting a discount. And what I like about the new contract is that it's a not-to-exceed. So no matter what happens, as long as we don't make any changes, that this is a not-to-exceed, that we will not see another bill from them that is outside of what their contract is. And we, I believe we voted on this in Finance, and we were all in agreement with this.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. This is a, a recommendation from Finance.
So basically, what it is, for, just for simplicity, is they're, they're just, it's ours. It's ours that they're, they're spending on this, as are OPM. And they, for the most part, have spent a year on this, and now we're extending it by another year. And again, a little pro-rata discount for, instead of $145 a year, I think just based on the amount of time that's passed, it's $100,000. So we voted on this. We've, I think Bob's at nauseam has gone back and forth with Answer on this. And the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee feel like this is in our best interest to move forward and approve this.
I have a question, it might be a silly one. But it, it looks, a part of the amendment includes an updated project plan that gives a detail of how they quantify that, that additional figure. I see there's some cells that are marked with dollar signs, like, you know, the estimate, construction documents. Is there any meaning to those dollar signs? That, you know, is that where the additional cost is? Or am I just trying to interpret too much?
I guess I'm not seeing, I'm looking, I've got their amendment up here for owner's signature, so we may be looking at a different document. I'm just seeing that they're extending it, that basically it's amendment to their original. I'm not seeing the dollar signs, though.
And actually, now that I look at it, all those dates are in the past. So December...
What we already paid, Raul.
You already paid, okay, that's probably what that means.
If it's back, then it is probably what was included in the last proposal.
So it's irrelevant then, never mind.
Anybody have any questions that I can maybe answer?
And I, I assume I know the answer to this because Finance is recommending it. This is in addition to the budget that we didn't plan for, so that the budget has been updated accordingly?
Yes, yes. This is in addition to what was originally budgeted, so it went to, because it's a change, it went to Finance. And now it's coming to you because it's over the limit that Finance can, can afford on.
Any other questions from the board? Ready to make a vote? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the Answer Contract Amendment as presented.
I'll make that motion to approve it as presented.
I'll second it. This is Ben.
And Nick and Ben, can you roll the call, Sarah?
Yes. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
Everyone?
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. When I mention move things around a little bit, I'd like to give an opportunity to Maura to provide her both the Capital Campaign update and the Development Committee update first, because she might have to drop. I don't believe we have any more vote items, so she would not be missing any votes. So Maura, you have the floor, and you can start with either report.
Thank you very much, Raul, and thank you guys for being accommodating. So I'll start with the Capital Campaign, cuz I know Ellen is actually gonna go into a little bit more detail on some of these things during her report. But we, I will give two quick little updates. It's one, we are having a kickoff celebration on October 19th at 7:00 PM at Tower Hill Botanical Gardens. And what I want people to be aware of is that there is a need to RSVP. So invites will go out by email. But we do have sort of limited capability, limited space at that venue. It's gonna be a really fun evening, and it will be the first of many opportunities for folks to get involved and learn more about the campaign and kind of celebrate the excitement that is brewing. That being said, folks who came to Parents Night last week, or this week and then last week, were able to, to check in with Capital Campaign Committee members, board members, who were sort of there on a volunteer basis, just answering questions and sharing information, standing with some posters and some visuals for what we've got right at this point for the project. Really exciting to see interest and field questions from other parents, so that was great. So let's keep that spirit of engaging and being interested in the project alive. You know, all of us, obviously, as trustees, or board members, can really answer questions, and same with Capital Campaign Committee members. So people shouldn't hesitate to reach out and ask questions. So that's it. I'm gonna save the rest of it for Ellen's report. In terms of the Development Committee, we are moving forward with Mr. Vital's help and sort of leadership on this piece to really reinvigorate our alumni population. And we are working on getting a date for the first of, of a series of three meetings with some alums who have agreed to be on this sort of, I forget what Mark is calling it, basically a committee to figure out what we're doing with the alumni, to really start getting them engaged and finding out what our alumni want and need from us as a school to do that, right? To be engaged, what works, what are they interested in, and what can we do to really strengthen that relationship? And part of it includes working with the current students, right? So that they feel engaged as an alum from their very first day as an alum of AMSA. So that's pretty exciting. That, of course, builds into the bigger picture of fundraising and development here at AMSA. And there's also more exciting news on that front, but I'll let Ellen share that as well.
It's called the Alumni Engagement Committee, Maura.
Thank you. Pretty self-explanatory, sorry.
I had to look it up, though. Alumni Engagement Committee? Yes.
No, that's been, just a comment that, that's green news. We've talked about alumni engagement in many different contexts. The fact that we're talking about it in development or fundraising capacity, I think is, is another angle that, that we should continue to talk about. So this is great.
Yeah, it's, it's, my background on the development side of things was in the high school environment, right? That's, that's where I started work in development at the very, very beginning of my career as an alumni office person at my old high school. And so I kind of came just assuming that that was done and then realized very quickly, when I got out of that environment, that it's not necessarily common except for at private schools or more religiously affiliated schools, right? And we are a very unique breed. And I think the best part about it is not necessarily the dollar signs, but really the engagement and how part of a community you feel, still to this day. You know, I'm connected with high school classmates through the different activities and through the communication. And it, you know, the dollar signs are great, but it really is a sense of community that goes with you, and no matter where in the world you go, you always have this connection to folks. And I think that's really the most important piece. And obviously, kind of shifting our culture to be more philanthropic towards the school because we have such an amazing resource right here that we don't pay private school tuition for. So, you know, it's a little bit of a shift, but it's really exciting to see such a positive response early on.
Awesome.
Yeah. Plus one to whatever, what Maura just said. I think that it's really great that we're, we're getting, getting engaged with our alumni.
Excellent. Any other comments in the Capital Campaign and Development updates? Questions for Maura? Anybody need help figuring out what to put in the brick they're gonna get for the Capital Campaign? Now, there's definitely a lot of opportunities to, to participate and to support, so if we ever need to be reminded of those, I'm sure Maura will do it.
Gladly.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Raul.
There are no questions, we can let you go. I know you're running between locations and dialing from your car.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Maura. Just to go back to Consent Agenda, I just call attention to this to make sure we're still good with the way we're dealing with these items. There are three things in, in the Consent Agenda today which are more for sharing information so that don't require a vote or any discussion, unless anybody wants to discuss them. So there's the financial statements from July, the change order from the architects, which is what I misspoke earlier. That's what we discussed last time, and that change order, executive change order is in the Consent Agenda. And the Governance Committee Summary Report. So does anybody want to bring any of those items up for discussion out of the Consent Agenda? And if the answer is no, then that's where they are. So they're part of the packet, and you can look at the details, and we can always bring them up for discussion. Excellent. So now, the most exciting part of the meeting, the executive director report. Ellen, take it away.
Thank you, Raul. That's a, it's a tall order. All right, let's share this. And, yeah, first, I would, I know Liz has, has left us for this meeting, but I, I do wanna thank her publicly for the efforts she put in to put my, my evaluation together, and it was done well past the time that she had retired from the board, so I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the years of service that Liz provided to the school and to me personally. Liz became a confidant and, and a mentor, and we, we, we became close over the years. So I, I really appreciate her, and will miss her greatly for the rest of the, the rest of the year. But I, I also, I, I'm grateful for the, well, always have been grateful for the opportunity that I've had to be executive director of the school. And it's just September, and so we, we will, we will not get sentimental about that, but, but I am grateful to have the opportunity to continue to work for the school, in service of the school, and, and to continue to work with the, the team of people that I have, you know, really had the opportunity and honestly, one of the greatest blessings of my life to work with. And so I am, I'm grateful for that. So thank you all for that opportunity. And I, I will do absolutely anything and everything I need to do to make this a true, smooth transition to the next executive director and, and always be a trustworthy and respectful helper in any way that I can going forward. So those are just a few, a few thoughts. And then, we, honestly, I live in denial, so we, we don't talk about the transition very much. And we're just gonna enjoy, I, I just keep telling everyone, we're enjoying every single moment, every single moment. We're just, we're just taking it in and, and enjoying all the good things and all the hard things and knowing that, you know, we're doing lots of laughs right now. A thank you to all of you who's helped and supported the back-to-school nights. I thought they were very successful. The parents were engaged and talking, and I'll get to that in a minute. But, but thank you for your support and participation and enthusiasm, because that's really beginning to build. All right, so here we are. Pretty soon, our trees are gonna look like that, at least I hope. We have had a great return to school. It's been the, the smoothest return to, to school that I have ever experienced actually in my, in my life as a, as an educator. Amanda Sensei, our vice principal, and Mike Noraki, our principal, really did an outstanding job leading and launching the school year. They were so organized, and the communication has been great. And honestly, that the behavior of the kids is so remarkably different and better this year, and, and our, our attitude and the whole thing just feels different. So do wanna thank, thank them for, for that and for everyone who contributes every single day to our school, every teacher, every, every staff person. It takes, it really does take the whole community to dispel success. It really does. All right, so I'm going to very quickly run through, I have some SAT results. This is a 21, 22 results. I have 22 AP summary data, very similar to what I've done in the past on, on both of these. And a building update of where we're heading and what some next steps are, Capital Campaign update, a little bit of razzle-dazzle, and then a review of just upcoming events. So first, we're gonna take a look at that SAT data. Now, when you look at this, you're going to see an awful lot of information. And I was a little concerned that there was too much on this slide. And yet, I wanted you to be able to see the side-by-side comparison. If you start down at the bottom, I just wanna tell you that what...
Did Ellen freeze for everybody?
What I look at when I'm, when I'm looking at these.
Sorry, you first, for a second, Amanda.
I froze briefly.
Yeah. You're good, man, you're good, you're good.
Okay. So it just, I started with the 2020 results, added in the 2021. But you know, unless you go back to 2019 and see where we were, and then kind of follow through the pandemic and what happened there and where we are now and what needs to be done, I really felt we needed to go back through all of the, of the four years. So that's what you have here. When, so let's look at 2019. So the total number of tests taken, and these are by 11th and 12th graders in 2019, was 118. For the average mean score total was 1322. That's broken down into the, the English, the reading, writing. At the average score, mean score is 646, math was 676. And then they talk about benchmarks. And College Wood sets those benchmarks. Those benchmarks are considered to be college readiness. In 2019, of the... of the students that took it, 93% met the benchmarks in both English and math. Okay, so that's that's the number there that that I'm looking at if, you know, without really breaking it down further further than that. We want as many of our students as possible, obviously, to have met the benchmarks that say, you know, in college, College Board's opinion, these students are ready to go off to a university. In 2020, we had 132 students that tested. And they may have tested multiple times, but those 132 individual. And but the the benchmark on both were were basically the same. You know, they were 93% who had met the met the benchmarks on the English and on the math. The individual, it shifted just a little bit, but once again, it was 93%. Now, that was the year that we went, we started doing remote teaching in in March was that 2020 year. 2021, for the most part, was that was the a pretty difficult year. Because we spent, you know, eight of the months doing remote learning. And yet the scores actually in 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 English, 99% of our students met the English benchmark. And the state showed this as well. It was the math area that it it went down a little bit. And, you know, I have no explanation for the fact that when you look in 22, the month, the math has has actually fallen down to 88%. And 87% met both benchmarks. So, you know, I have talked to Luba, you know, she is aware that that these are are items that we need to work on. The English really has held pretty steady. But we we need to take a look at that math. And I, you know, I think with what happened over the years of the pandemic, the students could still read, that you could still write essays and all. But when you actually were sitting down doing math problems, much more challenging to teach math through through a screen. And I and the state has also talked about evidence of that across the state that, you know, English, they we didn't lose as a state as much in English as we had in math. And and that in is the way that I look at that as well. That's I that may be the result. These students in 2022 that took the SAT, so last year, they were, I figure out, they were in eighth grade going in ninth grade back in 2019. So these these students were really had some long terms, long term effects by the time they get up to taking the SAT from the remote years and just from COVID and and all that went along with it. So it's something that we are watching closely and and there's definitely, you know, some work there. We want well, we want 100% of our students to be ready for both. But so I I'll take questions at the end. And if you want to go back to this data, I'm happy to do that. I I also have the ability to break it down into the different demographics and and subgroups as well. If you would like me, I can send you that information if if anyone would like to take a look at it. So now I'll take a quick look at the AP and I broke this down just the way that that I do every year. And once again, if you would like more details, I can do that. When you start talking about AP and in specific exams, you start talking about individual teachers and that's, you know, that's a you know, that can be a very sensitive topic. But our AP teachers are all amazing and fantastic anyway. So when we're looking at AP scores, we're we're our accountability plan has us measuring the percentage of students getting three or above. And for those of you who who may not be as familiar with AP, the students, you know, they take these college level classes, their approved curriculum by College Board. The students take the exams the first two weeks in May and they score a one to a five, five being, you know, the best and one not not doing as well. And the a three is a pass. So three, four, five. Those are your passing scores. And so College Board also really focuses on the percentage of total students of students taking AP exams and getting a three or plus. And that's as once I said, that that's also part of our accountability plan when we look at the our percentage as opposed to the state and global scores. So you can see that this is the last five years. This is their five year school summary report. And we're, you know, we're, we are in the same area over the years for the last five years, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. The number of exams that that we do is fairly consistent. And it sometimes depends upon the number, obviously, the number of the kids in the class and how many are actually taking AP exams. Part of the accountability plan is also to take a look at to take a look at the number, our percentage of students who have taken at least one AP between 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And that was 86, 86, 87%. And we did meet our goal for the state around the percentage of our students who took an AP class. It's been always very important to the board and to the school to make AP accessible to students who want to challenge themselves. And so we don't we we don't there's a lot of organizations who who will only put their top students in an AP class because they they want those fives, right? They want the fours and fives. And, you know, we really believe that each student has their own story. And a student who got a a three or even a two sometimes has worked extremely hard to get that. And we're very, very proud of them and the work that they've done. But you can see from from this here that, you know, from 2018 to 2022, it's it's usually in the below 90, high, you know, 89 range of our students who have gotten over that. Now, so AMSA is at 89% of our students scoring a three and above. And then what I do is I go in and I look, I I break down the Massachusetts test results for all of the AP tests that we give in common, because there's many, many, many exams, there's many AP exams. We do, we have 18 exams. So I pull out the the average score of the percentage of scores over three from Massachusetts, but only for the exams that we give. Okay, so that we're really looking at comparing apples and apples, as you can see on my slide. Then I look at what is the percentage that AMSA students earned a three plus as opposed to Massachusetts? So 89% of AMSA students did. 71% of Massachusetts students comparing the same exams received a three plus on the same exams. So AMSA is AMSA students are scoring 18% more of them received a three or plus on their their score. And on global, the same thing, I I pull out just the exams that we give. And AMSA students, 23% scored higher. More of them scored a three plus. And our accountability plan states that AMSA students, they would, it's 15% and 20%. So we beat both of those, those goals that we had for this year. So once again, a pride point for for AMSA and AMSA students, especially coming out of these difficult two years that we've had. And AP has changed each year. They they tweaked things. They went back to the pre pandemic AP exams. And, you know, in some ways, when you look back to you know, maybe there's a reason that I'm just thinking that the some of the scores changed over those years because they did some completely different testing. Depending upon which of the last two years. This is the first year it was more normal. And those of you who've been on the board for a while know that we like to look at the state rankings, but they will not be available until mid November, usually around Thanksgiving time. All right. So we got a little little building update here. We're very excited. All systems are go. Now that you've approved the the answer proposal, we are up to date and all of that work has been has been done. I am, I met this week with the the architects and they're really this week spending a lot of time talking about the physics labs and what we can do to to make them really usable and exciting for the students and the teachers. We had the schematic drawings that are due to us on October 14th, and they are on schedule. And then after we get the schematic drawings, those also then go to the cost estimators. We wait for about four weeks to get the the cost estimates back from them. And then we need to review those and they need to to be approved. So the Facilities Task Force, we're we're assuming that all all this plays out exactly, and the cost estimates by, and we will meet about those on November 10. If they get through the Facilities Task Force, they the numbers and and the plans will go to finance on November 15. Assuming it goes through finance, okay, we get through that, we will need to call a special board meeting to meet on November 17. So if you wouldn't mind, Sarah will take care of and announce that for us. But if you wouldn't mind holding that in your calendar, it will just be about the building. It won't be a full board meeting. We have another, our next full board meeting after after November 17 on December 1. So if you wouldn't mind putting that in your in your calendar and holding that, that would be great. And the bank is currently reviewing the initial drawings that we have for the appraisal. So I do want to bring up that there are some potential risks that we still could bump into at at this point, even though things seem to be really fine, finally moving along. We, a couple places that we could get stuck still. So the pro the the new project has not gone through the full appraisal process yet. It has just begun with Thatcher and with Boston on private. We need that project to appraise high enough to support the debt, to to support what we're what we're building. We have looked at this every way possible that we can, you know, think of, and we feel that that we're safe. But, you know, in the climate that we're that we're in, it's one of those moments where once the bank says, yes, you're okay, we're happy with the project. You have enough equity to support the debt that we will do a little happy dance on the side. Okay, that's definitely a hurdle we need to get over. And okay, and and once again, the team has been told and instructed many times and is very, very aware, Bob and I talked about it this week, that we have an $11 million budget. And we know we have some some funds in addition to that in cases, any other changes or anything that comes up with the building. But it's being drawn to the to the best and closest that that the architects can get it to the $11 million. It's looking like a 17,000 square feet that I showed you last month. But there is always the possibility that when it goes to the estimators, that it may come back higher. And then we will need to be prepared to look at it and decide how we want to address it. You know, we we we're hopeful that this is unlikely, but once again, we need to be prepared for what that might look like. If that is the case, that will that will be worked through through Facilities Task Force first, and then we may have to go back to the the estimators and the and the architects and all of that, which is going to postpone our special meeting. So I just want to get that out there. There's two big things we still are worried about or not worried about. We are watching and monitoring carefully. And that is the bank and is our project going to be able to support the debt? And and that estimate that that comes in from the from the estimators where we need it to come in. All right, little bit of a capital campaign update. The Capital Campaign Committee had an extra meeting this week and they have changed. We were talking about campaign for excellence. And we floated around a number of ideas. Capital Campaign Committee is is excited and exciting to be a part of now. We've got great people on that committee. And they have changed our our campaign theme and title. It's going to be Imagine Building Today for AMSA's Tomorrow. And we really feel that this is a a theme that can be used for many, many years to come, right? Because there's always a tomorrow. And at AMSA, there's always going to be another project. So we're excited about this because we're building today, we're building safety into the campus. We're building physics labs. We're building chemistry lab. We're building excellence. We're building all types of things and we will continue to build. So we we just, we love this theme and and this was a collaborative effort by by a group of folks that are on the committee. The other little piece that I is not on this slide, but I posted the Director of Development position today on Indeed and another, a number of other sites. And as of a few minutes ago, I've already received six applications, have not opened them yet. I'm gonna let it let it go for a few more days and see see how many we we have. But very, very excited about that. That job description was put together by myself and with the with the wonderful help and support of one of our one of our dads, Darren Rose. And I, you know, Darren has been such an amazing discovery. And I I remember Darren's daughter when she was when she was here at AMSA three years ago. And when I saw that he was interested in being involved, I had no idea the level of experience he has. And he's just absolutely amazing. So he helped me actually over the weekend getting that together. So I thank Darren and a huge shout out to to Darren Rose. Grateful to have him on the team. And so we're excited to see what we have there. He's given me a lot of advice on how to go about the interview process, interview questions to ask, and the important things that we need to focus on. And he is going to join me in in that interview process. So very happy about that. Maura mentioned the the kickoff, the AMSA Family Event kickoff for our campaign. And it will be Wednesday, October 19 at 7:00 PM. Once again, another a date we'd love for you to put into your personal calendar. And also to consider inviting friends of yours that are AMSA parents. So this is a parent event. We will have other events for companies in in the corporate. But this is more, this is really around engaging our families, getting information out to them, getting them excited about this. They're starting to see more and more things rolling out. And that's what this is about. So grab a buddy. Make it a girls' night out or a guys' night out and come on down. There's no cost involved with this. There, we have one of our volunteers and Maura, they're doing a lovely job putting this event together. I think it's going to be very, very tastefully done. I have no doubt. And so we're excited about that. So please come. Little bit of razzle dazzle, gonna run through this really quickly before Zach tells me I'm out of time. I love adding just some photos of our new sixth graders and new students. This is the orientation day. And, you know, I mean, really, what could be more adorable than than this, right? They they were mingling. They were, they had a wonderful time. This was a really a fantastic job that Amanda Moran and and a group of folks put together this sixth grade orientation. It ran over two days. It was, I'm easily the best one. Because we're just getting better and better every year. But look at those smiles. They're adorable. Okay, and this was our ninth grade orientation. So a few years ago, we put in this orientation was really to to help the ninth graders to focus on what's different about being a ninth grader. What's important? And and helping them with organization. They have workshops for them so that they can, you know, talk about stress relief and they they talk about, you know, setting up your organization system and, you know, why are your grades different? Why are they more important in ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th grade rather than rather than in middle school? And it's run mostly by the school councils. You can see our principal, Mike Noraki, there talking to the ninth graders. And it it the advisors are involved. It's a, it's a, once again, a great day. And this is a photo of Mike and Amanda Sensei, our our vice principal, with a couple of our students who are semifinalists in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. And this is Vedan Romalik and Hannah Veraka, two of our incredible scholars. We're very, very proud of them for for being recognized with the National Merit Scholarship Program. And my guess is you'll see these two over and over again throughout the year. Then I've I've gotten involved in a organization through the the city of Marlboro called Marlboro Alliance for Prevention. And I've I've joined that group last year. um, called, um, Marlboro Alliance for Prevention, and I've I've joined that group, um, last year. And the whole purpose is educating, um, students and in this, in the, um, the community about, uh, overdose and, um, trying to, you know, take the stigma of of overdose and and, uh, drug addiction uh, from people so they can get the proper help that they need. Uh, last year, um, in Massachusetts, twenty-two hundred and ninety, um, folks died from from, we lost them due to drug, a drug overdose. So this purple flag event was done, uh, this is the first year at AMSA. It was the first year at Asabet, and it was also done at the Marlboro Middle School. And if, for those of you who live in Marlboro, you might have seen this down, um, in in the center of the city as well. And so they, one of the the woman who runs the alliance came and talked to the eighth grade students. She lost her son to a drug overdose that he was twenty-seven years old, um, had been an honor student, uh, National Honor Society, uh, played sports. And he lost his battle with, um, with addiction, um, back eight years ago. So she she really has dedicated her life to educating our youth to keep them safe. Um, and she puts together these these purple flag events and she came and talked to the kids, told them all about her son, showed them pictures of of, um, of him as as a baby all the way to their age and said, does he look like a drug addict to you? The kids are like, no, that's right. And he he, this can happen to anyone, right? So the kids were really respectful, going out and 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 putting these flags down. A huge shout out to Jenna Logan, who is our, uh, P E department and chair, she ran with this really eighth grade, um, and took all these kids out and, um, and and helped them to really, um, you know, feel the the loss here and and to try to prevent their families from ever experiencing, um, the the horror of losing a child. So once again, in loving memory, um, of those who lost their lives to to overdose in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, let's hope we can get those numbers down, uh, five years ago. They, that that number was half of that. All right, just some events coming up, just to put on your calendar, capital campaign kickoff, once again, October nineteenth, um, at Tower Hill, seven P M. If you haven't been to Tower Hill, it's a real treat, so be sure to come. Um, PSAT is, it's been moved to October twenty-sixth. There was a little bit of a conflict with the return of the D C trip, so that date shifted just a little bit. Um, holiday staff party, the board members are always invited, love to have you come. That was December fourth, uh, thirteenth at four P M. And Lynn McCloskey is working on a location. We have arts night coming up and that is January twenty-fourth. I know we're looking now after the first of the year, but the year goes by so fast. And then just to have it also on your attention, um, on your minds about the board strategic planning meeting, which currently is scheduled for Saturday, January twenty-eighth. Go Eagles! And does anyone have any questions? That was a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions for me at all?
Ellen, I do have, uh, a comment and a question. Um, first, thanks for sharing. The director of development is posted, I have a lot of colleagues who work in development, so I will send that out to my network. Um, question on the S A T scores, do you track who gets a four and a five? Because I know that's usually the score needed to receive college credit. And so I was wondering if you kind of tracked each specific score or if you just had the data for who got a three or higher?
No, you know, College Board puts out some fantastic reports, Laura, and and it goes all the way down to the individual score, what they scored on every single A P, um, exam that they took. And all of that is provided to the teacher who taught the class so that they know what their students, uh, received. And also it's tracked very closely by the department chair of of each department. So Lubas Schmidt is our math department chair, she has all the data for the the A P statistics, the, uh, A P Calc A B plus the A P Calc B C, um, and they do extensive work with all of those. Yeah. Anything else?
It seems that Ms. Naraki had a quick correction, the P S A T started Tuesday, the
Oh, the twenty-fifth! He's right, it just changed at the end of the day, oh my gosh, Mike, thank you. You're absolutely right, it it did, it changed, it's the twenty-fifth and Kate has sent out that information. Yes, you're right, happened right at the end of the day. Anything else that anyone has? Um, I, you know, I guess I just would would end by saying, thank you, Mike. Um, he keeps me straight. That that this is a, this is an exciting time at AMSA, it's exciting for so many reasons, not only the building and the capital campaign building momentum. Um, but, oh gosh, this year feels good. And anyone that you talk to, any one of the teachers, the staff members, the smiles on the kids' faces, it feels different this year. Um, and we are just so grateful to to have, um, even in the rain today and the kids were running between buildings. Um, it is sunshiny at AMSA.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lindsay. Any other comments, questions, any topics, um, the executive director report? And thank you, Laura, for that question, I was kind of thinking that you would say three or more, but you know what, I'm four and five, so.
Yeah, well, I just know the college I work at and a lot of others, the score is four or five. So I was just curious how many actually got college credit, because that's the ideal goal of taking these exams is to get out of a class later on.
Yes.
It is, and yet some colleges will only use the scores, um, for leveling, um, on on which maybe English class they're going to take. Um, some of them don't accept them at all. And they certainly, a lot of them didn't accept them during the pandemic, um, which, you know, I completely understand. Um, sometimes the, when the students find out towards the end of the year, they know where they're gonna go. The exams aren't until the first two weeks in May, and sometimes they'll opt out of taking it if they find out that the college that they're going to does not accept a certain exam, because there's a, there's a significant cost to them. Although, uh, as you know, although we do pay, um, you know, fees for any students who are on financial aid, we cover the costs for all their exams. But thank you.
If there are no further comments, then Laura, I'll turn it over to you for the parent rep report. Thank you, Ellen.
Great, thank you. Um, I don't have as many concerns brought to my attention this time around. Um, I do have a little bit of a follow-up on the uniforms, because that was the the hot top issue that, um, parents were reaching out to me about for for the last meeting. Um, Cindy and Rebecca from the P T O and I did meet, um, with Mike Naraki and Amanda Sensei just to kind of have a follow-up conversation on the uniforms, um, and kind of some of the parent concerns. Um, you know, one thing that was noted is a lot of the uniform decision-making lies within with the executive director. And because there will be a new executive director coming in, they didn't think it made sense to make some significant changes on the policy until that new person came in. So it sounds like the general policy will remain, um, as is and be reviewed by the new executive director. Um, I was told, I don't think it's happened yet, but I think at the next finance committee meeting, um, there will be a proposal to increase the uniform aid provided to families who do receive the uniform aid. Um, as the costs of the uniforms with Lanza and have gone up, um, doesn't quite cover as much as it used to, um, so that was great to hear that that's going to be a proposal coming in. Um, and we did, we talked a little bit more again about the timeline of families finding out about their aid. Um, and unfortunately, due to some things beyond AMSA's control, that timeline kind of still does remain in the summer and preapproval isn't, um, really an option, um, but they did say they really do want to work on improving and increasing communication about financial aid support for families, um. You know, and we noted, it's definitely important at like the parent information nights and as families are accepted for their first year because we didn't want, families may not be as aware of it at that time and you don't want a family making a decision for or against AMSA, um, because they think it could be financially out of reach compared to the public school. So it sounds like communication on that will definitely be increased. Um, so that was more just a follow-up. Oh, and the other piece, uh, to follow up on that, the P T O did add some additional uniform sales to also try to help out with the issue. One interesting thing to note, um, one of them was tracking kind of the uniform availability at those sales. And it turns out the sales are not as helpful for the older students, there's a lot more uniform availability for the sizes people have outgrown in sixth or seventh grade, but when you get more to, I guess, the adult sizes, you know, students will get to ninth or tenth and and they're kind of going to stay that size for the next few years. Um, so uniforms, especially in those larger sizes, are very much in need at these uniform sales. If anybody does have those lying around, um, those are harder to come by. Other than the uniforms, the only other issue I have been hearing about is related to lunches. Um, at first, there was some confusion about beverages still being being provided for the lunches. Um, but it seems like I I reached out to Ann earlier, um, and communication went out to try to clarify it, it seems more as an issue with the lunch ordering system. Um, I did hear just, I think there's some growing pains and confusion or challenges with using the new lunch ordering system as well. Um, I unfortunately haven't used it, my son doesn't like to order the lunches. I figured I was gonna order him one just to try it out, um, so I'll try to do that and and get that experience, but um, definitely some pains about that. And then, you know, along with those comes, um, the can, you know, again, the the multiple systems navigating between to try to figure out ordering things from here and there. Um, you know, and still some confusion about getting into those systems and um, and having like needing a student I D and and just trying to take care of things, um. So not sure the solution, if there's better instructions on how to use these systems, access them, but overall, uh, that's basically what I've been hearing on the parents' end.
If I may, just just jump in for for a second. Leanna, I'm wondering, are there any video, instruction videos on the the new system?
I'm not sure that there are any videos available to the parents at this point, but, um, Erica and I could probably put something together.
That's great.
And just a little background for folks to know why we, um, switched from, we had orgs online, um, previously. And, um, so we've asked all of our software vendors to sign a student confidentiality agreement. And orgs online actually refused to sign that, um, which is very concerning. So that's why we had to move from the vendor that we had, um, to the new vendors. And we tried to get the food services to work and with, um, My School Bucks, because we wanted it all in one place, but, um, because of the way we, um, provide our meals with our caterer, that system wouldn't work for us. So unfortunately, there's, there's multiple places where families have to go at this point, but we'll work to resolve it at some point.
And then
There is a video, there's a YouTube video connected in one of the meal manage emails. So it was really quick, but it was a YouTube video on how to use it.
All right, maybe we can put a link onto the website. So i- and then the only other one was the financial aid, just to clarify, because I, um, we are putting a proposal in to increase it for the next budget year. Um, so that's a budget that Leanna and I will put together in the spring. And it will go through through the process, through the spring for the next fiscal year. But in the meantime, any student who needs, we've already talked to Stem Soaring Eagles, which is our foundation, and any student who needs additional funds, um, you know, purchasing uniforms, um, should just contact, um, Leanna and we will, uh, work with Stem Soaring Eagles. It's one of the purposes of the money that's there right now is to is to support students who, um, who are in need. So they can't reach out to the foundation, uh, directly, but they can go through Leanna and I and we will make sure they they get some extra support, we've already done that for for one family. That will, that should bridge us until we can get it into the budget.
Thank you, Ellen. Sounds like an important addition, a good example, when Laura was talking about the communications, maybe making making sure everybody knows those those opportunities are available, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I I did a little search myself through the website, uh, because Mike and I had been meeting and talking about this. And, um, and it was, it was tough for me to find where this information was. So I've asked, um, Mike and Mike Finkel to, um, to just add a bunch more links everywhere to get people into that, um, the the policy and and so that it's not so tough to find. It's only in a couple places right now, but we'll fix that.
I I do have a question of clarification, Laura, and if it if it's a long conversation, we can flag it for further discussion later. I don't want to take too much time on this, but when you mentioned the the meme that you have with, uh, Mr. Naraki and the the change of policy for the uniforms, my understanding from the conversation last month is that the biggest concern was the constraints that we have with the vendor and that we were contractually obligated to use Lanza and, and you know, when that was gonna change. When you say change of policy, is that what you're referring to or is there other specifics in the policy that the parents are looking?
Yeah, yeah, no more of that, or, you know, could we ever consider just plain navy blue polos without the logo? Or any any kind of slight change? It wasn't like toss the uniform policy out the window thing, um, but really any slight change to what's currently in place. Um, you know, is something the, you know, they think is best to hold until the new executive director comes in in case that person has your own ideas or preferences and ends up wanting to change it again.
Okay. Again, I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't true. Thank you. Excellent. Any other questions for Laura? Anything anybody want to flag? Well, thank you, Laura, for the for the very detailed report. Um, Zach, you're up next with the faculty representative report.
Yes, hello. So, uh, first thing I'm gonna start off with is by echoing something that Ellen said, which is the general consensus amongst the teachers, is that this has been one of the smoothest starts to the school year that any of us have experienced. Whether that's a couple of years of teaching, or I've heard this from people that have been teaching for ten, fifteen years. Uh, comparing it to last fall, and we all remember the the concerns, I mean, it was going on, it is a world of difference. Uh, this year is starting off very smoothly, very positively, everyone just feels very good about this year so far. So please knock on every piece of wood you have nearby that that continues. But so far, it's great. Um, I also have a couple of just pieces of, or one main piece of a great information that was passed on to me just to to bring up to make sure the board was aware, that AMSA has been awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mental and behavioral health grant, uh, back in July. This is being used to fund, I have a list here, one, academic success coach in the E L L department, an administrative assistant in the school counseling department, a wayside mental clinician two days per week, challenge success work, B R Y T network memberships, and the Care Solace referral service for mental health, uh, which is to help support teachers, their family members, and anyone else. So that's just a fantastic thing about continuing the support of student and worker teacher mental health. Uh, the one concern I had to bring up, which is something that the the school is aware of and is working on, is that just some teachers are concerned about a lack of paras in the school. We just, we have had a couple that have left for various reasons. Uh, and right now, we are, we are missing some, which is causing some difficulty. But Lynn Jarvis has sent out an email, she is actively working on trying to get additional paras. And I think one more than we, correct me if I'm wrong here, Ellen, but but an additional one even from what we are replacing. And that is, that is my update.
I will add there that, um, that one of the paraprofessionals got an internal, um, promotion, um, and and one had to had to leave financial reasons. There's a statewide shortage of of folks that fill para- paraprofessional, uh, positions. And, um, it 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 takes skill, it takes patience. Um, and, you know, the the pay is not what we would love to offer, but we actually, um, our pay at AMSA for paraprofessionals is actually quite a bit more than at other surrounding schools. And we've, we've done that, that salary research, but, um, we are, we are, we're working on it. done that, that salary research, but, um, we are, we are, we're working on it. It's a very, very important position.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Appreciate the update. Anybody have any questions, anything that might want to flag from discussion from parent or the faculty rep reports? If not, we can move on. Um, I do have something, I believe it's my mistake when I was putting the agenda together. Jill, we have anything to talk about the self, the board self-assessment? I believe we did that last month, right?
Right, we did that last month.
All right, so that's a leftover. I should have caught that in the agenda. So it is on the agenda that we're, we did talk, it's a leftover from last month. Uh, so we're skipping that. Um, moving on to chair business. So, um, we did just vote on, um, Ellen's evaluation. So that wraps up the evaluation process for this past year. The only other thing I'm gonna add to chair business is that we had, um, in the past talked about the timing of naming or, or, um, you know, kind of calling for the survey task force to be formed in September. And that was typically driven for the need to put together the fall survey, which last year we decided to, we're only gonna do the spring survey going forward. However, I would like to use this opportunity to remind everybody of the wonderful opportunity that it is to serve in the survey task force, because it's a great way to see what's going on in the school, to hear the unfiltered comments that come from parents and staff. So that is definitely something that I would recommend any board member that might be interested in joining. I would be looking for somebody to take the reins as the chair of that, which is something I have been doing in the last, what, four years? Um, I'll, I'll be happy to stay involved. I'd just like to give an opportunity for somebody else on the board to become the chair for that. So nobody has to answer right now, but just, just throwing it out there. Now, we have time now that we don't have the fall survey. We don't have to do this in September. But, uh, I'll be reaching out separately to all of you if anybody's interested. And I think it's a great opportunity for anybody on the board to learn more about what's going on from the school and hear everybody's feedback. Uh, because I think it's very important to keep that, that channel open to the board. Uh, so I'll leave it at that. I'm not appointing anything or, or building the task force until everybody expresses their interest on that. Uh, and I believe that's all I got for chair business. So we can move on to a committee report. So we, we heard the development committee report from Laura at the beginning of the meeting, uh, which means I'm gonna turn it over to Roger for the ed committee report.
Right. All right, thank, thank you, Earl. Uh, the education committee kicked off. We had our September meeting. We, uh, kicked off the education committee for the year and we'll, we're, our primary focus is, uh, building and we'll have more information next month. We're building out a calendar to say what are all the things that we want to, as the education committee, that we want to complete during the school, next, the school year. That's
That's, that's, that's all I have unless somebody else, Laura or Mike wants to add on to that. Hearing no questions?
No, it's just sort of a general discussion meeting as a lot of people, I think, were also newish to it, so.
That's good. Yeah, thank you, Roger. Any other questions or any discussion? Now we can move on to governance. I know governance, uh, attached the or the consent agenda report summarized in the meeting, but I don't know Sheila, if you want to add anything to that?
Um, I wouldn't add anything. It was all there. We're still working on some stuff with recruitment and, um, elections for officers and the procedure for that, but, um, no, we just met and it's all in the consent agenda.
Great. Nice and brief. Thank you for that. Um, finance. And I guess I'll give the opportunity.
I'll take that. Yeah, I'll, I'll take that. Um, so for finance, we met, we had a very, uh, very productive meeting. We went over a number of points. Um, the three takeaways we have is overall, we're ahead of schedule in a positive way on the, uh, school year budget so far. We're net favorable of about, uh, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. Um, second, the, uh, next month is, we'll be doing the official auditor's report in finance and having a summary of that coming to the board in October. So you can put that on the agenda calendar. And, uh, third, we have, um, expense coming forward. Uh, Eric Lane is doing some more research. One of, a couple of our chillers at our building have, uh, failed or in the process of failing and they're doing some research and we will be coming to the board eventually with an expense to, uh, get that fixed. So, but more, more, just more, more in the future research is being done.
Thank you. Any questions for, uh, finance or any of the committee reports? There are no questions, then, uh, we can move on to a meeting wrap-up. Seeing action items from previous board meetings, I'm just gonna call out the one that we have from, we, we talked about the capital campaign cards. And I can say for a fact that they have been sent to the board members. So everybody should have these with a QR code to the capital campaigns. I think it's a great excuse and a great thing to have something physical. When you meet somebody, it's like, hey, do you know anything about AMSA? Here's a card. You can take it away. So it is an aid. It's, you know, something that makes it easier for us to be advocates and ambassador for the school. So thank you for the capital campaign committee for Ellen, for everybody that was involved in putting those together. I think it's little things like that that keep, um, set in the forefront of our thoughts and as we meet people, uh, to share how great the school is and how much it deserves everybody's support in the community. So thank you for that. Um, any agenda items? Uh, I think Roger just brought up one up on, um, from, from the finance committee report. Anybody else have any agenda items that should be added to the October board meeting?
I don't think the chillers are ready to be on the agenda item.
No, it's not that the chillers are not an agenda item. It's just a heads up that in the fall, the springtime, fall winters timeframe, we will be having an expense that we will be talking about.
Got it.
But um, was there, I believe the plan was that October was going to be uh, in person?
Yes, I was gonna bring it up at the end. So yes, that's still the plan. Uh, hopefully that works for everybody. Um, if we do it in person, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, do, do we still need a quorum in person? Per open meeting law? Yes. You're on mute.
Yes, we do. I'll answer for her.
Okay.
Actually, no, we don't because we're still under the governor's order, so
Sarah, you're on mute.
The, can you hear me?
No, yeah, we can hear you Jill. We can hear Sarah, still talking.
Yeah, no, we're still under the governor's order.
Right. That's right, Jill.
So in, in the, when the governor's order is over, which I think is now end of March next year.
Right.
Then you would have to have the chair and a quorum in person. But now since we're still under the governor's order, we want to be in person, but we could still hold the meeting if it turned out we didn't have the chair or quorum.
Got it. That being said, it would be great if we could make an effort to get together in person. The main reason why we decided to do the October meeting in person was because it's a different, um, I'm gonna say feeling of, you know, how we, how we can, uh, open up and talk and share our thoughts and, and whatnot when we are in person and we're aligned. Just like our students are, you know, had such a good start of the year because this is, you know, the, we, we got over all that having to do things remotely. So I know it's difficult for some of us that might not live close to the school or working close to the school and have to commute to make it there for, for the meeting. But I do think it will be worth the, the extra effort for that. And again, there's always the, the option if you're running late or whatnot to do it remotely, but, um, the idea is for most of us, if possible, to, to get together in person. I think we'll, we'll appreciate it and we'll feel the energy, what it feels to be back in the school, just like the students do. So I'm looking forward to that next month. Um, anything else on additional, uh, action items or candid agenda items for next month? Or anything else that?
You already said the audit, correct?
Is that next one?
I believe that's in October. Yes.
So be, there'll be a finance committee, uh, Leanna and myself will present the summary of the audit to the board. Um, this is a starting last year, the, the auditors, as of last year, the auditors no longer report to the full board. They just report to finance. And then the finance committee gives a, a quick summary of the audit results to the board. Old time board members will remember that the auditors gave the report to the full board.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And they did, as part of the audit process, they reached out to me as the board chair for an interview on, you know, just validating fraud or anything, or making, making sure that they share what they found, any findings. So you know, there were no findings and I shared my perspective on how the processes work and whatnot. So we'll hear from the report on that, the results of that interview and, and the audit as a whole, so. Great. Any comments about meeting effectiveness? How did we do timekeeper? We're ahead of schedule?
By an hour and forty minutes.
Excellent. So, um, unless anybody have any other comments or anything else they might want to bring up, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, move back then.
Oh, wait a minute.
Second.
Who was first? Who was first?
Back then, second by Roger.
Ben and Roger, okay.
And Sarah, would you do the honor?
Yes, I will.
Call the roll.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
He, he dropped already, if you remember.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Uh, Ravel Porce?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for your time. We'll see you in October and have a great evening.